Good evening, everyone. I'll call the public hearing to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear any representation from the public with regards to conditional use application 201-8-01 submitted by Manitoba Housing to permit a homeless shelter on lot 22 and 23, Plan 7650, also known as 202 Edwards Avenue. So that's the purpose of the application, the purpose of the hearing, and so I will then open it up. And I think what I would like to do first, if I can do this a little out of order, Councilor Commodore needs to go. She can't stay this evening, and she has asked if she could just speak. First, she has a letter she wants to read, and then she'll be leaving. Okay? And then we'll get into a more structured setting. Okay, Commodore.
Thank you very much, Jim. This is the letter that's written by Phyllis Robertson. She lived at Northern View Lodge, and she has since passed away in November. But I had kept this letter. I've gotten a few letters from her, and this one I kept. It was written September 2016. This is going to be all her words, so please don't take it, try not to take too much offense from her. "When is there going to be something with two street bumps? There is more now than ever. When cars to stop for lights, they run out to the cars and beg for money. When you come out of the bank, it's the same thing. Give me a looney, give me a smoke. There was ten of them standing in front of the bank on Thursday. You were too scared to go there. We phoned the cops, but they don't come. Most of the elders people have canes and walkers, so they don't have much of a chance to fight them off. They're on every street corner. A lady from here went shopping yesterday, and she had to walk to the end of the street and then cross over to the Tiger Stores parking lot because she was so, she was scared of them, and she was Aboriginal. She said neither. Why can't the mayor do something about the street bumps? Does he drive, does he, Jim always gets this. Does he ever drive around town and see what it's like? They change their clothes any place they want and leave all their old clothes there. Use the bathroom any place they want. I hope something is done soon so we can walk out on the sidewalk without being scared." Phyllis Robertson, Northern View Lodge, the PA. This lady lived in the high-rise, Manitoba Housing, and the only statement I want to make was, this was her glory years. Thank you for your moment, and I have to go.
Thank you, Councilor Commodore. Now let's just kind of put things back into order. So the hearing's been requested by Manitoba Housing. Harold, if you'd like to come forward and state your name, and if you're not a resident of the county, you don't have to give us your address.
Thanks very much, Mayor and Councilor. I appreciate giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of Manitoba Housing, who is not directly the applicant but is involved in the...
Could you speak up? We can't hear you. You have to almost, this is a really brutal room for acoustics, so sometimes you have to raise your voice.
Yeah.
I know you can do it, Harold.
What's that?
I know you can do it.
I'll dig, I'll dig deep. Thanks very much. I hope you can hear me now. My name's Harold Smith. I'm Executive Director with Manitoba Housing, the Provincial Crown Corporation. I'm based in Thompson. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to the, to the proposed conditional use tonight. I know it's a difficult question, and I, and I wanted to make sure that I came here recognizing that it is a difficult question, and I'm not coming as a, someone from out of town here to even suggest that I know what's the right decision for this community. I respect that process, and I respect the decision that the council is going to need to make. I wanted to start just with a little bit of context for...
Sorry, could we just maybe, just like I can hear everybody behind you saying, "I can't hear, I can't hear," I'm wondering if maybe if we get you to slide to the end, one of the ends here, and then you're kind of facing the crowd as well as us, then maybe everybody will be able...
Can he actually just sit inside, facing him?
Well, if he does, then the problem is, is that then we don't hear, and I know that there's microphones, but these are for the recording and not...
Do you want me to take the mic down?
Yeah, I don't think it would. The mic thing is...
I don't know if that link will make it. If the link's not sure, it'd be better.
Sure.
No, no, just so that he's facing the crowd as well, and then maybe everybody will
be able to hear some.
I can stand up too, if you want, if that, if that's any easier.
Yeah.
I want to, I want to make sure that I'm, not that anything I say is really important, but I do want to make sure that you have an opportunity to hear. So, no, no, do as I would be forced. Anybody, if you can hear me, just put your hand up, all right? I'll start from the top, just so that people make sure that they can, that they can hear what I, what they might have missed. My name's Harold Smith. I'm Executive Director for Manitoba Housing for the Northern Region. I'm based in Thompson, and I just wanted to come down today because Manitoba Housing has, has offered to purchase the property of 202 Edward, subject to it being suitable for use and approved for use as a, as a homeless shelter. And I, I want to first of all say that I'm very aware that it's a difficult decision, and that we'll respect the local decision. We understand that it's a, it's a, not an easy issue to wrestle with, and it's certainly not the case of Manitoba Housing or of me coming in from out of town, even suggesting what I think is the right decision for you as a community. The, the background for Manitoba Housing is that we support financially the operation of shelters throughout the province, including the current shelter in, in the PA. Last fall, we, there was a, we were given notice that the, that the shelter would not continue to operate with this, with the current, with the then-operators, and we weren't certain that we would have the use of the facility. There was a very strong public show of support, and we took that to mean that there was strong support for the service in the community. And we worked with the proponents, the folks who came forward, and, and tried to build a bit of a plan. We've now got an organization that is prepared to operate the, the shelter, but we haven't secured a location beyond March 31st. And as you know, now it's, we're into February, time, we're gonna, we're gonna be running out of time on that, and that, and so the context for us looking at 202 Edwards was that we knew we were working against the clock if we wanted to secure a location. Certainly, at the, the public meetings that we attended in the fall, we got a strong feeling that people wanted the, the service to continue, and if it was going to continue, we needed to find a location. And we quickly looked around and saw that a, that a building was available and available for sale, and, and applied for the conditional use, or had the, the owner apply for the conditional use on that basis. So again, just saying, just reiterating that we're not telling you that we think it's the best location. We're telling you it's a, it's a location that we could, that we found that was available on the market, that would, that would meet the needs of a, of a shelter in terms of Certainly, we are open to other options if people can bring them forward. We just haven't seen a lot of those yet. We are open to discuss other alternatives if, if the community feels that, that they're there. We've, our, our staff in our region include Juliette Popplestone, Teresa Manco, and Teresa Roberts. All of us have been working with the current operators of the shelter. Councilor Zelinski's been involved, and, and I can, I can say that we're not, we're not locked in with this, with this as the only alternative. It's just the only alternatives that we, that we've found. We are working against the clock. We're hopeful that we can find space before the end of March, but we are, we are getting, we are getting into a, into a tight space right now in terms of being able to find alternate location after the end of March. Now, that's really unfair for me to bring forward to your council, because I don't want to be in a position of saying, "Well, it's all, it's this or nothing." And I, and I understand that it's, it starts to get that feel when, when people come in and say that they're looking to develop in a certain place, and they're working against the deadline. I know that happens often, and that's, that's regrettable. It certainly was not our intention, was to try to create a bit of a squeeze play for the, for the, for the council to have to deal with. But it is what it is. We've got a service that's operating, and we think that there's a support for continuing that service. I know that there are concerns with the location. Councilor Commodore's, the letter that she read is, is something that I've heard many times, and I've, I've felt that, that as well. Homelessness is not in itself, doesn't often occur just on its own. It often comes hand in hand with other, other issues: addictions, mental health, and, and a number of behaviors that are, that are really tough to take in your community. Shelter, I certainly won't say that shelters are the solution. Can they be part of the solution? That's certainly what, certainly supported by evidence, that shelters can be a first step for people to, to get more stable in their lives, but it won't happen on its own. Most successful programs are ones that are, that integrate, and I'm no expert, most successful programs are ones that integrate sheltering, giving people a safe space in which to deal with addictions, mental health issues, reunification with family, and a, and a long, slow road to healing. And it's not successful for everyone, and it certainly isn't successful quickly for many of the, many of the clients. So it's, the way I view shelters as the very bare minimum of service, that, that first stepping stone in terms of dealing with those, those broader issues, some of which were mentioned in the letter. So I want to thank you for your time, and I'll be here to hear other, other concerns, and I, I just want to reiterate that I, I, not coming in and saying I, I, I wouldn't even suggest to, that I know what the right answer is for you as a, as a community. I, I did want to just come in and give you that context for where we're coming from when we encouraged this application to come forward.
If I may, is Manitoba Housing going to be the owners of the, of the building?
If we're able to find a willing, willing seller in a location that is, can be, that works for, for the shelter but also works for the community, we're looking to purchase a property, just to give a security, certainty in terms of, of knowing where we can deliver the service, where it can be provided.
Okay. So, so the intention is though, is that Manitoba Housing is looking to purchase the property at 202 Edwards?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question, and you don't have to answer this question, but I'm just wondering, so obviously we have a current building that the shelter is functioning out of, so I'm just kind of wondering, what's the barrier to being able to, I know rent right now is a, is a, is an issue, a high cost of rent, which eats into operating dollars, but, so if you're looking at purchasing a building, could you not maybe, or has it been discussed of purchasing the current building for that kind of same price, or is it, I mean, are there other barriers and factors that we just don't understand? Because I mean, that's a question we get from the community, right? Like, the federal government and the provincial government put all this money into our current shelter, into building the building, so why can't, why can't Manitoba Housing, you know, purchase that building, or, you know, still provide the services out of that building, I guess?
Valid question, and I'll, I'll just be, be careful in the answer.
For sure.
What we need is a, is a willing seller, and that, it's possible that that, that might come along, but people have, and organizations have every right to decide how they're going to use the assets that they've got.
For sure.
And there might be other, other uses contemplated. We currently have until March 31st.
Yep.
And that's not to say, it may, it may be possible that we could, we could still come up with something, but we haven't been able to secure any, anything to date.
Can you share any information with regard to, you're asking for a variance to operate a homeless shelter, so what kind of operation would that be?
So I, we don't, the current operators of the shelter, the Stand Up For Oscar's Place group, is currently operating a similar service to what was operated in the, in Oscar's Place before. So it's overnight shelter, sheltering for, for clients. When possible, opening for part of the, the daytime, they've been, they've tried to extend some of those hours. There are services in town, homeless outreach mentors, opportunities to connect with, with homeless clients and try to see what, what they can do to help them stabilize. Not making any promises, but there's always an interest, and I think that the Stand Up For Oscar's Place has this interest in looking at, at providing some, some additional services, perhaps some more stabilized housing, like, like, I can't speak for them, but, but it's, it's been suggested that they would want to look at transitional housing, that it's somewhat more permanent. Just to give, like I said, shelter, pure sheltering overnight is, is a really, real baby step towards more stable housing, right? And, and it's a, it's a spectrum of different housing needs. The next step is something where you can actually have a place that's, you can leave your stuff, or a place where you're sleeping in the same bed every night, and that, that's rough description of, of transitional housing. We would, we would support a community group looking at that, understanding it takes more resources and more supports, and ultimately, our, our role is to try to come in and, and help provide the, the housing as a, as a, as a basic service, and we would want the, if the community wants to look at, at moving to a higher level of service, it'll take more community support to do that.
So then there's no expectation of 24/7 access? Because I guess basically, the concern is, is where do they go when you close during the, anytime during the day, it doesn't matter day or night, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it's always a challenge with, with shelters. There are never enough resources, whether they're from, from the government or from the community, to, to provide all the services that you want. Daytime services might solve, might go a little ways to solve some of those other, those other issues, right? The ability to, to do that, and that would be a, a community decision, and a, and a decision of the organization to say, "Do we have the resources to be able to, to do that?" Resources being money for staff time and, and things like that, to offer more daytime programming. I know that's always a struggle with, with people operating shelters, is can we operate more, more in the daytime and provide some more programming?
Thank you.
Certainly.
Jim?
Yes, Jim Monteen, Bank Group Limited. You mentioned earlier on that, yeah, we are on a bit of a deadline, but has Manitoba Housing looked around for any other alternatives? Like Crystal mentioned, a very good alternative being the existing building. Have you looked at any other properties? Have you looked around?
We have. We're still open to any suggestions in case we missed, we missed anything. We've really just done a lot through word of mouth. We've contacted people locally, and that option that, you know, has been mentioned, we're certainly, certainly open to more discussion on, on that one as well, if we're able to, if we're able to secure a longer term there than we would.
So have you looked at any other properties, sir? This the only one you've looked at? Have you, Manitoba Housing looked at others, sir?
Yes. I think that our, and I can't speak for our, our staff. I've been, this is the one that was sort of, had the most immediate availability and combination of size. I haven't been in a number of, in any other properties, but I know that we've, we've sort of cast the net and, and looked around at what was vacant and available on short, on short notice. There may be others, and I'm, I'm open to, to hearing about others. If you want to talk later on, then for sure, we can. If, if people feel like there's a, a location that would better suit that than, I mean, we've got the application in place, but we're still open to alternatives.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to speak to him, Commodore. I don't want to speak to him. That's fine. Yeah, you can take the corner seat, I guess.
Want to sit for a second? Where's, do you want to sit down?
I will, sir, thanks.
Firstly, I'd like to pass on three, this is, this is Tri-Family Health, by the way, up the threads, and there's three letters of opposition. I've got a couple more that I believe you probably have already.
Can you, sorry, can you just state your name and your address for the record?
Sorry, my name's Luke Duncaf, and I have the property at 163 Edwards Avenue. That's directly a kitty, kitty corner to the property in question. Firstly, I'd like to say, how many people here are opposed to the use of that building as a homeless shelter? How many do we have here? Two, four, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, including me, plus three I just gave you. There's 15 people.
I have one here.
And one there. Okay. I'm sure some of these people won't want to speak publicly, they're, so I'm glad we had the opportunity to show their hands. I'm not opposed to, per se, to a homeless shelter. I am opposed to a homeless shelter in the business section of our town. I totally believe that our property values will decrease. I've been assured of that by a real estate firm, not in this town, but it's had some experience with that. I've also been assured of that by the assessment branch of our Manitoba government, which told me that they can't say that publicly, but, but it's just a simple fact that you'll have a decrease in property values of a minimum of 30% for the general area of, of the homeless shelter. So that's a substantial amount, and it, and it speaks to what a homeless shelter does to the business. It, it speaks to your business going backwards. We also know that we hardly have any business on that street anymore, and I've been assured by most of the people that I've talked to along that business area that, in all probability, the homeless people have had something to do with that. People are afraid to, either they're afraid to go, come downtown in that area where the homeless people are hanging out, or they don't want to be subjected to the hassles So I, I know that we should be working positively towards making our downtown area more viable, and such that the people, the clientele that come downtown to do their business could appreciate it and, and just do business without hassles and stuff. It, I think it's really important that we, we work positively to making the downtown a much better place, and I totally believe that homeless shelter will not help in that respect. I, I would urge council to, to work diligently towards making the downtown safe, hassle-free, and perhaps maybe working with the people in the area to, to try and get some of the buildings that are empty there back into business. It certainly would assist your tax base, our tax base. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Anybody else wish to say?
Just so as you know, that's the first time I've ever spoken in public.
Wow, good job.
You have a future, sir.
Next election is in...
All right, so there's a number of letters that, that need to be read into the record. Janet, you want to go ahead and do that?
First one is from Dr. David Wall of 216 Second Street West, Spring Hill Dental. He was unable to attend...
Okay, you have to speak up.
We can't hear your story, please.
But as the following be read, Spring Hill Dental fully supports local initiatives that help those that might need some help. We have quietly donated thousands of dollars to school food programs and women's shelters and other programs in the PA OCEAN and Flynn Forum. We believe that businesses have a responsibility to give back to the communities that support them. We also believe the community has a responsibility to its businesses. The discussion regarding Oscar's Place coming to downtown is a difficult one to discuss in a public forum. Any opposition might be construed in a manner not intended. Spring Hill Dental was proven, has a proven record of treating all members of our community equally. We don't believe there is a single person who could argue against that point. We also have proven record of donating to local causes that positively affects the lives of locals in need. But we are opposed to the proposed new location for Oscar's Place at 202 Edwards Avenue. To be clear, we fully support Oscar's Place, but believe that as a community, we must balance the needs of not only those that use Oscar's Place, but also the needs of the local community as a whole when considering moving Oscar's Place location. Sorry. In 2014, when we were looking for a location for our clinic, we considered locations all around town. It was decided that the downtown core was our best choice, not only for how the downtown was in 2014, but for the future, future potential we saw and still see in the PA and downtown core. We are concerned that future potential companies may not want to again invest very large sums of money, as we did, in the future of the PA and downtown area with an increased homeless presence. Since we have opened in 2016, we have had to constantly deal with the unfortunate side effects of homelessness as a local town, downtown business. We've had to clean up human feces and alcohol bottles many, many times from our property. We've had to remove people from within our businesses for very inappropriate behavior, and our patients have told us numerous times that they have been worried walking past groups of homeless people arguing intensely and fighting near our clinic. Our team of six female staff have many times mentioned how they are already worried about walking to their car alone very early in the morning or very late at night, as they do every day. Many of our patients suffer from serious anxieties regarding their dental treatments. Spring Hill Dental does everything we can to try to reduce these anxieties so that everyone can receive the highest level of dental care. Creating a situation of an even higher concentration of homeless people immediately outside of our office will only increase the levels of anxiety for our patients, as well as our staff. We also have many patients who come from communities outside of the PA and OCEAN. Many of these patients have dental options closer to their homes, but they choose to come to the PA for their dental needs. These patients not only receive their dental treatments at our clinic, but they spend money at our local businesses while they are in town: gas, food, shopping, et cetera. If they decide that they feel uncomfortable enough regarding coming to the downtown core, not only will they have lost their right to stress, to a stress-free dental experience, we will have lost a patient and all other local businesses have lost a chance for increased income. Spring Hill Dental is committed to contributing to improving the lives of locals in need, but we do believe that proposed location for Oscar's Place would be a detriment to our patients, staff, and the growth of our downtown core. We enthusiastically support Oscar's Place and have faith that either the current location can be adapted for improving Oscar's Place or a more suitable location can be found. The next one was from the PA District Chamber of Commerce. The PA District of Chamber of Commerce opposes the relocation of Oscar's Place to 202 Edwards Avenue. As a chamber of commerce, our top priority is our membership. The chamber members have businesses in the area, have expressed a unanimous opposition, opposition to moving the homeless shelter to this location. The downtown area has been the target of many efforts to create an inviting and prosperous commercial area. Having a shelter at this location would take away from the downtown atmosphere we are trying to achieve. Our members have expressed concerns with personal safety while being downtown, giving up a prime business space to a non-commercial entity, cleanliness of the area, and more. As a chamber, we fully understand and support the need for a functional, well-researched homeless shelter in the PA area, but at this time, we do not support relocating the shelter to 202 Edwards. The chamber strongly encourages efforts to bring forth an overall community development plan, including for a homeless shelter, and offers assistance to the town in doing so. The next one is from G Rivulent Enterprises Limited. We are 100% supportive of a well-thought-out and effective homelessness shelter in the PA. However, we are opposed to the new location at the corner of Edwards Avenue and Second Street. This location is not in any way going to positively impact and support the local citizens, families, youth, and local economy, local businesses, tourism, or support any other positive progress in our downtown. Delido is the longest-running and oldest private business in the PA. We feel that with our downtown location and nearly 90 years of operation, we have a unique perspective on the downtown, including the homeless... perspective on the downtown, including the homelessness matter and the impact on our town's citizens, visitors, and their families. We understand that at present, the current homeless shelter opens each day between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. and remains operational until the following morning, a fact that creates a serious concern for us as it relates to the safety and security of our customers and staff. The operating hours will encourage, if not dictate, all the foot traffic which is headed to the homeless shelter to walk and/or stumble by regularly awaiting families and children in front of the Delido. As a result, this will certainly negatively impact the safety of local families and children. We cannot think of any other businesses in the PAO that regularly and frequently have the families and children lining up and gathering on public property in such great numbers. Unfortunately, we do not have financial means nor the legal right to employ or enforce policies and procedures on public property, and as such, there is no possible way that we could ensure the safety of our patrons as they arrive at the theater, wait outside for the show, leave the theater, or stop by to take home popcorn. Delido is the longest-running atmospheric movie house in the world and has preserved through our four generations of the Rivellant family to offer pleasant environment to our customers. The children, teens, young adults, and families that are the core customers of the Delido will certainly be less safe on public property if this new proposed location comes to pass. The families will quite rightly be concerned about the safety of their loved ones and will likely make the choice to frequent the theater less often, if at all. Mayor and council, through their action or inaction, decide to further erode the economy, economic well-being of our community, it will surely have long-lasting negative consequences, including the likely closure of the local movie theater. We currently have policies and training in place in order to do our best to ensure the safety, security, and well-being of our young customers and staff. We are gravely concerned about the impact that this decision could have on our ability to stay successful and keep Delido open and operating in the future for everyone to enjoy. In times past, we have all heard talk about the need for places that people, particularly the youth, can spend their time in a positive environment that is drug and alcohol-free. The Delido offers that to families, and we hope we can still in the future. However, should you choose to place the homeless shelter within a stone's throw of our business, you will very much be concurrently choosing to further erode our ability to succeed and will in actual fact be encouraging more businesses to close. It will be sending the message that businesses are not supported in our community, cannot rely on the support of mayor and council, and that mayor and council will not perform their roles and do care and diligence to ensure the safety and prosperity of local families and children. The recent challenge facing our community regarding the location of the homeless shelter provides us with the opportunity to make significant changes to our approach to homelessness and to the economic development in general. I hope the mayor and council will take this opportunity to properly consult with the community and develop a better solution for all stakeholders and citizens, especially the homeless. And then, this one is from Funky Threads and Tri-Family. I am 100% for Oscar's Place homeless shelter. If ran properly, efficiently, with tools readily available, such as bathroom facilities, 24 hours, and resources and counseling, to get help for the people that need to break the cycle, for those applicable. However, I am not in approval of moving of this location, and I feel that the communication between the current owners of the building, town, Oscar's Place, and Manitoba Housing should be the utmost priority. First, I feel quite silly writing a NIMBY letter, not in my backyard, when I'm generally in favor of most developments. In this case, however, I feel that there is good rationale. In my opinion, the current location is ideal and could be more functional with additional supports and resources. If number one is untrue, there are other locations in our community, not necessarily in prime commercial property, that would be more attuned to this type of development. We are desperately trying to attract businesses to our community, such as the dentists that moved in Spring Hill, and invest in our arguably economically suffering town. How should we reward that? By putting this development within stone's throw? If Spring Hill is 100% in support of this potential project, I will reconsider. Look at Edwards, burned-down building gateway, empty deserted business boopsters, empty deserted business clean right, business closing down furniture, on the other side of the street, empty building huskies trying to sell, James trying to retire, Ki-hut trying to sell. Sorry. Do we not see what's happening to our town? Will the movement of this type of traffic be conducive of thriving downtown retail experience? I feel I need to reiterate my support for the Oscars and the function of it in our community. My heart says put it wherever they want it, but my brain says let's really think this out on a long-term community impact. The other one was from Ed Klimchuk of Remax. To whom it may concern in regards to the town of the PAO considering improving the 202 Edwards be the new location for the homeless shelter, I respectfully oppose such approval as I feel there are better locations. And then another one from Jack Box. Just a note to state my opposition to the location of the new homeless shelter on Edwards Avenue. And that's all I have.
That's all?
That's all.
Could you repeat those?
I have a good question. Did the Chamber of Commerce tell you how many people that they had?
No.
They didn't?
No.
Because my understanding, talking to people here today, was that there was a substantial amount that they had, but they didn't give me the numbers either. I was hoping they had given you some numbers, but there's been a, from their point of view, there's been a major opposition to this.
Anybody else? John?
John Moore, Sound Innovations. I own a property that's just across the back lane from where you're proposing. I guess I got a couple of questions. Manitoba Housing, you're basically running the show now?
Yeah.
So who's running the show of Oscar's Place? You're funding it?
Yeah. So we're rent leasing space for the current Oscar's Place group to operate it, and we fund it. Oscar's Place volunteer group is locally based, is the group that is operating the shelter.
So my question is, you're supplying a place for them to go in the evening, correct?
Yes.
Is anybody tracking the people that are coming to you, finding out what communities are from? Has any of that tracked?
Yes.
Now, is, is any, is there any commitment or some form of a process to try and reunite these people with their families in the communities that they're coming from? Is there any process of that going on so that we can actually get them to their families?
Yeah.
So, so how many people have we reunited with their families in the last year?
The thing is, is people are their own person. We can't force them out of the community. We can't force them to go anywhere they don't want to go. These people are here, so this is where they are.
Okay, but you're, we're giving them the capability of staying here. And I have no problem with that if they are totally homeless, but if they have a home to go to, don't you think we should have that as part of the program to get them back to their homes?
Definitely. And the Stand Up For Oscar's Place group's goal is to further along that process. Right now, all that's being provided is emergency overnight shelter services, so it's a place for them to stay at night. But the goal of Stand Up For Oscar's Place is to move into different areas where we can provide the supports to these people so that they are able to get help, mental health, addictions, things like that, get them, get them back to where they need to be, back on their feet, whether that's here, whether that's somewhere else. That's, that's the goal. That's what, that's the point.
But we do have numbers as to how many people we've relocated back to their families? Like, is that a number I can see on a piece of paper somewhere, or?
We've been involved with, with the shelter for five months.
Okay.
That's it. People have been relocated.
Okay, so in five months, how many have we relocated back to their families?
Two.
I'd be fired. I, I definitely believe that there's a, a good for what we're trying to do here, but I also believe in my understanding as to what's going on, that there's got to be a lot more thinking involved before you put that in the downtown area. I mean, we're paying a lot of taxes to be in the downtown area.
Unfortunately, the way that our zoning laws sit right now within the town of the PAO, the only place that a shelter could ever be allowed is within commercial zoning.
Okay.
So, that's.
That's fine, but that's commercial downtown, drop-dead right by the post office where everybody has to be, right close to, I mean, you got to start looking at other areas. And if you can rezone something commercial, then you have the capability of putting it wherever you want, because you can say, hey, that's commercial now. Let's put it over there. So I just want to see a little bit bigger box here than just the little downtown core. I want to have at least people, you know, take a broader look as to what's going on. I really feel Oscar's Place was, there's a ton of money that was spent on that, so why isn't that the priority?
So I'll just say what I think everybody's been dancing around, is that the Friendship Center owns the actual physical building of Oscar's Place, and so I think that maybe there, it doesn't sound like they want to sell it, and Manitoba Housing can't afford to keep paying the lease, or, because that eats into their operating dollars, right? So if Oscar's Place wants to take the vision beyond the emergency 24-hour care, they're trying to find a place that costs them less operationally so they have more funding to do the other things, like being able to provide some daytime services and having people there to do counseling and that sort of thing. So I think that that's kind of the issue, is that Manitoba Housing would buy that building if they could. But they don't own it anymore because it was signed over to the Friendship Center. So they can't just let people operate out of it, and they have to pay the lease that's being asked for.
So they owned it and they signed it over?
I don't think they owned it. I think that what happened was the federal government and the provincial government came together and built Oscar's Place, and then they needed an entity to run it. So at first, there was, the homeless shelter had its own board, it governed itself, and then there was some issues, so the Friendship Center took it on. And when that happened, I'm assuming that that's when the building was signed over to the Friendship Center, but I don't know for sure. All I know for sure is that now the Friendship Center owns it, not Manitoba Housing, so that's the issue, with why they won't operate out of it, or why they can't, and why they're paying a lease.
Okay. Well, you've got my opposition.
Thank you, John. Chris?
I got a question to council and maybe to Mr. Smith here. You said that the federal government got involved in creating Oscar Place. So would it be improper to suggest maybe the federal government get involved with the provincial government and relocate the new Oscar Place across the river where it's, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in our backyard? Like, we're not going to get political here, but the point is that the vast majority of the people involved are from outlying communities, which are wards of the, wards of the federal government. And we're, we're actually at the moment trying to work from a municipal and provincial position. So if federallies are involved, why can't we involve them entirely, or much more so? Does anybody have an answer to that?
Well, I, I'll take a shot at it. Sure. I think that clearly the provincial government is at the table. Clearly, they're prepared to purchase a building. The federal government isn't yet at the table. It seems it takes them the longest to get at any table, and time is running out. I think the Friendship Center has indicated, they gave an extension, actually, and they, they need to wash their hands of any kind of operation in that building in terms of a homeless shelter. They simply cannot do it anymore. They determine that. I, that's my understanding. What I, what has happened is that the sand is running out of the time clock. It's, it's running out. And it would appear that we need to have this fixed by March 30th, or there won't be a, there won't be a shelter of any kind. I, I've been going to meetings on the homeless shelter for almost a decade now, and it saddens me that we're at a point, almost a decade later, that we're just looking for a different location, that they're not getting the help. They're not, the, the, the resources don't appear to be there. They don't even, appear to be even close to being there. And so my issue, of course, is, is that I'm having a hard time getting behind a plan that just simply shuffles the cards. I, I just, I just, I just can't, I'm having a hard time with that.
I agree with you.
You know, and so I, I, we need, what we need is time. What we need is time. We need, we need to get, we need to contact. Someone needs to try and get the federal government to come to this. I have no idea what the issues are in terms of what the value of the building is, or anything like that. Really, I can't even speak to that. But I do know that time is running out, and I think Harold said it best, they put a net out there, and this just seemed to be the best fish, at 202 Edwards. And so that's where that sits. And they've come to us and asked us for a conditional use variance, and I'm just really having a hard time with that because I don't, I can't, I have, I have no reason to think that, that this is going to change in a positive way at all, ever.
I agree.
And, and as taxpayers, you need to know, you're now paying for security at the front of this building. And that's crazy.
I created my own security. The banks have created their own security.
Yeah, I know. Pay our own security. Join the club, buddy. Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what Alan said a couple, a month ago, join the club.
So.
I don't see that as a solution.
Can, can we, as a group, then perhaps encourage the provincial representative here to try and find a location that would be much more suitable and less detrimental to us? That's, that would be what I would like to do.
I think, I think that this need, this, this is a, this is a time thing. This is a time issue.
I get that.
And so I think the Friendship Center and Manitoba Housing need to come back together and talk and see what can be done.
I, I don't, I don't think we should be bulldozed into having a, because of time issues of a month or so, or five months, for instance, I don't think we should be bulldozed into saying that we have to use that location.
Okay, anybody else?
I had a question, and.
Sure.
I had a question for Jen. For conditional use, so we mentioned commercial zoning. That doesn't automatically mean you can have anything you want. You need a conditional use, is that correct? So any location in town other than its current location is going to need to have a meeting like this.
Exactly.
Just for clarification, because it seemed to sound like.
And if it was put somewhere else, not in a commercial central zone, then there would be a rezoning requirement, which is a step.
To make it commercial.
There'd be two steps.
So my question then would be, is it inappropriate to suggest that it be put on Crown Land? It's out of, it's out of the town and out of the zoning concerns and out of par here.
Yeah.
I think it's still just shuffling the parts.
Yeah, yeah, again, we're shuffling parts here. You know, all of these things are valid concerns, are valid questions, but again, it's a, it's a calendar issue. It's a calendar issue. And so that's, I think, where this needs to go, is back, back to the, back to the two parties and, and just, because as it sits right now, and I said it earlier, I'll say it again, I have a really hard time just moving this to a new location.
I agree. I have one question.
Yeah. Can you state your name, please?
My name's Larry Porter. I'm popular in sports for uptown. If the province was already involved, and they owned the building, did they not see a problem with just giving the building away and not worrying about the future of what was going to happen with the homeless shelter? Is it not something that they would have thought about as they were building the building and putting all that funding into the building, and then turning around and handing the keys to different foundations, saying, here, do you look after?
So I don't know if it's fair to ask that.
That's our thing, yeah.
If there's anybody here that can. Okay, I'm like, I don't know if there's anybody that can answer it.
That's a fair question, Anna.
All right, I'll just take a second.
I'm glad I could answer that one.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
So the province, Manitoba Housing, they were on the building, and wasn't involved in this construction. The funders at time were under the federal government with some provincial money. So the owner, the proponents who stepped forward to say we need this service were the ones who owned the building. It's not a case, and I just wanted to make sure that that's very clear. It's not a case where.
Where you, per se, where, it's not your foundation, per se, but it was the provincial government that was involved in it, which is our government. So they built it, used our tax dollars to build it, and then turned around and went, here. built it and used our tax dollars to build it, and then turned around and went, here I don't know if you can have the keys to it, because we're paying you to look after it, but the funds were mismanaged, and now you don't have it anymore, but here's a free building for you for your input?
Yeah, I still don't, I can't agree with one of those. I can't agree with the characterization at all about how that's being portrayed. There was some support. There was local fundraising. There was, there was some government support as well. There were a number of factors that led to that, that building from the outset, from the outset, being owned by, by a local organization. So, I just want to-
I do love the stuff of the need for homeless shelters, just being that on the right side, almost where they're proposing to put it. I get to see, especially with my cameras, on a regular basis, the homeless in that area and what they're up to. And sure, there is a good amount of people that do need help and will appreciate the help, but what you're forgetting is you're putting them into a business sector of the town, and there is a good number, good number of people that are abusing that system, and they're going around and they're destroying properties, and they're threatening people, and they're scaring people, and they come in and they use your washrooms and they destroy them, and then they go back about their business. But then it's the business sector uptown that has to deal with all of that and all of those people coming in. And the first time, God forbid, you turn somebody away from using your bathroom, you're a racist so-and-so, and you have no respect for other human beings. But if you have seen how often my wife has had to go and clean up after people that are so-called homeless coming into our establishment, and me being the nice guy and saying, go ahead, you can use the washroom, and then she comes back out there and goes, Larry, did you go and look in that washroom? They made a complete mess of it. Now, this is the kind of people that you want to put in an uptown area with, like they set up a little while ago, the La Higa Theater, the other businesses that are uptown, the post office, the dental, and expect people to walk by with their kids and deal with this. I can't even put my dogs out in the back lane without them being threatened by people going up and down the back lane because my dog happens to bark at somebody. Next thing I know, I look out the window and somebody's throwing rocks at my dog. And believe me, it's not the next guy next door, his business guy. It's the homeless people. I've lived here my whole life, so I see a lot of them. And it just blew me away that they were even considering putting a homeless shelter right, right smack dill or center uptown area. It still floors me. I didn't even know about this meeting until when I walked in to tour. I just happened to be going through my mail I picked up today, and I seen the letter and went, oh, shit, okay, I've got to run. That's why I didn't even notice after the meeting started. But I just, I don't get it. I don't understand why. Like, I understand the need, and I understand the rush because you have to get something, but not right uptown. And once you have it in there, it's almost an impossible thing to get rid of and move it somewhere else. So, to me, we're way better off if we can find somewhere else now, or if we have to put it back a little bit and deal with MMF or whoever it is that owns, the Friendship Center that owns that building, and try to persuade them into giving us another six months in there so we can find a better location. Almost anywhere is a better location compared to where they want to put it.
Okay.
Very good.
Yep.
I have a question. My name's Shelley Yarvin, and I'm in the uptown area. And my understanding was this is a variation application, and people in the radius were supposed to receive notice of this. Is that true?
It's just, it's not a variation area. This is a conditional use, so.
But how come some people go on letters and-
It's a 100-meter radius.
Okay, and so, would you say from the location there to here is 100 meters or less?
It's more than that. It would be more than 100 meters.
Yeah.
How about the Beaver Room, or, I mean, the home hardware building?
You've been here a lot.
So, if you live somewhere-
I live right in the business district.
Yeah, and you didn't receive a notification, it would have been because it went to the owner. They always go to the owner of the, of the business or the establishment. They wouldn't go.
So, is it only businesses, she's asking, was it only businesses that got notices?
Well, no, I was just thinking if she lived in an apartment, that she would have went to the owner.
No, maybe it's a home. I've lived there for 38 years. What I'm getting at is maybe all stakeholders weren't informed, so they couldn't attend.
So, what happens is anybody who lives in a 100-meter radius would receive a letter in the mail?
Okay, and I'm saying maybe I fell into that radius and didn't receive a letter?
Was it only businesses, or was it businesses?
No, it would have been everybody who was in a 100--
The address.
And I was at the mail, the post office today, and there was no letter. So, I'm saying, if I got this, how many other--
We're just going to look on the list.
What was the address? What's your address?
What's the physical address?
163 First Street West.
163 First Street.
No, that's, that's more than 100 meters.
It's not a very, 100-meter radius isn't a very big radius that we'd get letters.
And you want this many people?
No, it's 330 feet.
Pardon?
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm just saying, there is a short form that I agree with all the letters that you read, that I strongly disagree with the location. It will do nothing to help revitalize our downtown area. It will be harmful to the businesses already there, and it will further discourage new businesses. Short and sweet.
Do you want to, do you want that to be on file?
Sure.
Okay.
Scratch, scratch. It's not even a question, it's scratch.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to say at the same time that I'm opposed to the location.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Yeah?
I've got a question for Mr. Smith here.
Okay.
He, he said earlier on that the Oscar Place was created by a consortium of different financial groups to get together to create the place. So, why is the provincial government unilaterally, basically, taking the bull by the horns to deal with this problem now with a new location?
Well, it seems to be that Manitoba Housing's been involved in the homeless shelter for quite some time.
I'll come up here if that's all right.
Sure.
Just so I can speak.
Yeah.
I've got, I'll start off by saying I want to thank everyone for the respectful and informative conversation that's taken place tonight. I really appreciate that. I know it's a hard issue, and it's, and it's not always the case that you get this kind of a respectful conversation about this. So, I wasn't involved in the construction at the time of the, of the Oscar's Place shelter. It was a local drive by an organization to build, to build that and provide that service. I think it was over 10 years ago. There was, there were, it was the capital program to build the building involved a number of different sources of funds. I don't know even how big of a funder the province was for the capital portion, but we have always been a supporter of the shelter in terms of operations. That's the program that we, that we run. When we, when there was a change in the operation, the operators of the, of the facility weren't able to, to continue anymore, as we do in other communities, we get involved to try to find another operator. So, it's really in terms of the operation. When it became apparent that we might be working, and this is back last fall, it became apparent that we might be working with an operator who was willing to operate but not have a place to operate in, then we stepped forward and said, well, let's look at introducing some stability to this and looking at, at securing a property. So, what, what triggered it was the fact that there's a, there was a desire to continue the service, and you can't continue the service unless you find a location. So, that's why, why we've become engaged. Just by way of answering one of the other questions, the federal government does have a program. It's called the Homelessness Partnering Strategy. And it would be, there may already be involvement from the community in the, the steering committee that, that guides their funding decisions. They're sort of on a couple of year funding cycle, so you really need to plan ahead in order to get support. But they do have some resources, financial resources to help provide these services and in fact to move to those, those higher levels of services. We've had those conversations with Stand Up For Oscar's Place to look, because there, there's an interest there, and I can't speak for the group, but I, there's an interest there to try to provide some more services that help to stabilize people rather than just the, the basic shelter services. So, I hope that answered your question. And I do want to thank everyone for, for their, for the questions and the respectful way that those questions have come forward. Thanks very much.
Great. So, I feel sorry for the people that just walked in, because my next line is, is there anything else?
Don Maximchek. I'm a senior in town and a taxpayer. The problems I've been hearing people express is where Oscar's Place is right now, and even if we move it there, which I'm opposed to, I don't think the problem's going to change much unless the liquor commission's going to be moved, because that would seem, that's what it seems to bring to me. So, not just my opinion, but, and also I'd like to see homeless shelters give a hand up instead of a hand out, and that's what it seems to be doing. We're offering them a place to sleep, and they're not getting much help to find other ways to, to live. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay.
One more thing?
Let's let the ladies speak first.
Okay, that'd be fine.
My name is Teresa Basti, and I work at the laundry mat. And I've had to turn, I've been helping the homeless, giving them food, because I have lost money. I've had to turn them away from using the bathroom, and now they, I have to lock the door now because now they come by, give me the finger, and, you know, call me racist and different things. I've gone out on the street and given them sandwiches that I made from my house, but I mean, I can't let them into the laundry mat because they make a mess, and then I, now I'm afraid of them. I have to keep the door locked because they're getting violent now. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Final comment?
Yes, I'm in, just come in, and I'm quite positive against the location. I just wanted to, I don't know if he was going to speak or not, but I, I thought I'd bring that to your attention. But if he wants to speak--
I heard a lot of speeches outside.
But you weren't now, or something?
Okay.
If I may, my name is Watkins. I just was thinking about how over the years the town has squandered some of the best commercial space. If you look down Fisher Avenue, you see a police office taking up a large amount of space, perfect commercial space, was wasted on a facility that could have been located elsewhere. Same thing with Autobank. But they're there forever. They're, we're not going to be moving them out of there. They're, we're stuck with them. And I think Larry has a good point here, that if you locate this facility where you're contemplating being, being located, we're going to be stuck with it. And if it means that there's going to have to be some revision of thinking about deadlines, I urge you to force that on the people that, that might be trying to impose deadlines.
Anybody else? I don't want anyone to leave here and say, I never got a chance. So, okay?
To make the point, so regarding zoning and conditional use, basically the way the zoning bylaws exist, any application for the homeless shelter to be located in a different area from where it is presently located will require a conditional use application and approval.
How long does that take?
How long does the approval take?
How long would that process take?
It would be the same, it would be the same as this process, so there's a month, 30 days notice, whatever it is.
For the first state.
But my, my point is, is that there will always be a conditional use required, and I wanted to say that for myself personally, like everybody here, everybody is sympathetic to causes and parameters around homelessness and what brings that forward. But for myself personally, to approve any conditional use in any location, I'm going to need to see from whatever group it is that's putting that forward, more than just we want to provide overnight emergency shelter, and we'll figure out the rest later. There has to be, I mean, when Oscar's Place was contemplated and built and brought into existence in the first place, it was with transitional housing built in. It was with programming and resourcing built in. It was all of those things collectively together in that physical location, and then, and then it fell down, and we are where we're at. And so, there are lessons to be learned from that for whatever group it is that's going to pick it up and run with it. And there are lessons to be learned for us at this table about, about the seriousness and the consequences of not putting good forethought and foresight into choosing to approve variations or conditional uses or whatever it might be regarding whatever issue in town. So, for me personally, I'm not, I can probably say that unless I see more than, we just want to get it up and running, I'm not going to support a conditional use application. There has to be more than just we need to get it up and running and then we'll figure it out. Because that's not, that's, in my mind, that's not enough to, to show that there's actually desire within the community to have that change, or that there's leadership within the community. Because it's not the municipal governments, in my opinion, it's not the municipal government's role to provide that service. Sheltering for homelessness, services for addictions, services for mental health, those are not municipal government services to provide. That's not infrastructure. We do infrastructure. We do water, we do roads, we do recreation. We support community groups that undertake those kind of things. And the provincial government, because it is regional issues. Homelessness is not based, the number of people that might, or the demographic of homelessness is not driven by people that are actually mostly from within our community. It's a regional issue, and therefore the provincial government needs to be involved. And Manitoba Housing's here, and that's great. They are one of probably three different departments that should be here talking about what the programming will be. The federal government is missing entirely, but maybe they've been engaged. We don't know. Stand Up For Oscar's Place has been, they're showing leadership from within the community, that they desire to see something change, and that's good. But it's got to be more than just, you know, here's, here's a basic framework, and we don't have anything else. It's got to be more thorough than that. It's got to be more meat on the bone for me to agree that, that we're going to approve a conditional use for a location to change things. I just wanted to say that to be clear that as a counselor--
Anything else? Then I will adjourn the hearing.
So, don't everybody leave. We have so much more meeting to get to.